The Running Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in Bever Hall, Running Post Office, Mary Bold School, Alliance Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runway Public District School District website. Right now, we need to stand up to say the Pledge of Allegiance. So Luke, why don't you start it Luke? I.
I. Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call board members.
Ms. Derrick.
Here.
Ms. Anderson. Ms. Beebe.
Here.
Ms. Buckhorn.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Farrey.
Here.
Ms. Schrimpedelozzo.
Here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Balden.
Here. Also President Mark Ainucci, Superintendent Schools, Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Supervisor of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Jay Yezzi, Principal Bingham Downing School, Mr. Steve Peely, Mary Bold Principal, Mr. Phil Sol, the Vice Principal, Mary Bold School, Ms. Gladys Hubbard, excuse me, Child Study Team Supervisor, Mr. Frank Hines, Supervisor of Billion Grams. At this time, I need a motion to approve the meetings work session, regular session for November 18th.
I make a motion to approve all of the meeting notes from the work session.
Second.
Motion de vacaria, second and by no means. Are there any questions? Role call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrey.
Yes.
Ms. Schrimpedelozzo.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Balden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're going. I now need a motion for the financial report period ending November 2015.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll second.
I'm sorry. Motion be my new and second and by Maria. Role call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrey.
Yes.
Ms. Schrimpedelozzo.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Balden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We already had our presentation from our auditor, so at this time, I would like to introduce Mrs. Yezzi and Ms. Medjuski and our Bingham first grade students.
Good evening, everyone. We have a very special presentation for you. We have some of our youngest writers, our authors, as we call them, at Bingham School. Ms. Medjuski was willing to volunteer her time, do a little preparation to get some of our students to read something that they recently published. We work really hard on teaching them how to write, and we really celebrate writing as much as possible. They just had a publishing party recently, so I thought perfect timing to get some to share what they've written, so I know they're very excited, maybe a little nervous, I get it, where I'm a little nervous talking about it. Every classroom at Bingham Downing has an author's chair, so that's all, we brought their chair this evening, they sit in it and feel comfortable and just share something special that they've written. So, Ms. Medjuski?
Hi, everyone. So, our first grade class began working on how-tos, and we've been talking about kind of like the order words, on first, next, then, and last. So, we did our end of the year, our end of the unit publishing party, they got to choose whatever they wanted. We made a list of all the topics, so there's how to make ice cream, how to brush your teeth, how to decorate trees, so they got to pick whatever they wanted, and they wrote three different good copies, and then they finally decided which one that they wanted to use as their publishing party. So, we're each gonna come up, and this is our fancy office chair at school. So, we're gonna go up and we're gonna get some reading, so you ready?
How to brush your teeth by Narnia. Brushing your teeth is good for your teeth. First, you get your toothbrush. Next, you get your toothpaste. Then, you rub your toothbrush. Last, you brush your teeth. Brushing your teeth is good for your teeth.
How to make an ice cream sundae by Ronny. Making an ice cream sundae is great. First, get the ingredients. Next, put the vanilla ice cream in the cup. Then, add a taco slice. Last, eat it. Yummy! Making an ice cream sundae is awesome.
How to make popcorn by Lisa. Taking popcorn and butter, first put butter and oil in the oven. Next, add corn, cream, and corn milk. Then, shake the pen unless you love popcorn.
How to make an ice cream sundae by Michaela. Making an ice cream sundae is fun. First, get out any kind of ice cream, put it in a bowl. Then, put gummy bears on it. Last, put the ice cream sundae in the freezer. Take it out. Get out the spoon, then eat it. Making ice cream sundaes is really cool.
How to brush your teeth by Narnia. We should brush our teeth to get rid of the germs. I, I get my toothbrush. I put toothpaste on my toothbrush. I brush my teeth. I put, I put tooth, I put tooth, toothpaste on my toothbrush. I brush my teeth and I spit it out. I feed my teeth, toothbrush with water. I think my teeth is fun.
How to make popcorn by Superon C. Making popcorn is fun. First, I have to get the bag of popcorn, put it in the microwave, then it cooks in the microwave for five minutes. Pop, pop, pop. Last, I take it out of the microwave, then I eat it.
How to ride a horse by Olly Smith. Riding a riding horses is not easy. First, you go outside to the barn. Next, go, let's go, let's get your horse. Then, get the saddle and put it on the horse. Last, get on the horse and ride.
How to get ready for school by Autumn. Getting ready for school is important because you can't go to school on your stomach. First, get dressed. Next, brush your teeth. Then, eat breakfast. Last, walk to school. This is how to get ready for school.
So, they become fantastic young teachers.
Yes.
And they do this all by themselves. So, they, they did a fantastic job, so. Thank you very much for coming. Probably don't wanna stay for our boring meetings, so leave your parents and go home now. I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday. Keep writing.
Ms. Yezzi, did you get a picture?
I did. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Only, does anyone in the public have a question on the agenda? This is Moore.
Crystal Moore, 516 Port Avenue. I just wanted to, I've reviewed over the school trips.
Yes.
Historically, we've done one school trip to one amusement park, that was an eighth grade trip that we look forward to, and we now put in for, it seems to be a Hershey Park trip for the seventh grade at their classroom. I just wanted to know, you know, is that something that we wanted to do? I mean, obviously, that's something that needs to be put forward, but I just wanted to make a take. Just as a parent of, you know, the, an eighth grader, that's something that they look forward to as kind of a reward that you get, you know, your last trip is something or big, like an amusement park. If we're gonna start another class trip to an amusement park, it might kind of take away from the big trip as an eighth grader, and also, the distance to go to Hershey is gonna cut down the amount of time that they're gonna be able to spend there, therefore, the cost of going that far versus how much they're gonna get a chance to enjoy it. I just wanted to kind of point that out. I know we have a lot of trips that are going on the agenda tonight, that might be more important.
Well, I.
The PTA takes no.
I was just gonna say.
No, the PTA takes no stance on it, it's a personal opinion. The PTA fundraised, and the PTA allows the schools to, to pick the trips, so I don't think it's not as representative of the PTA or anything like that, it's just more of a question, comment. The only thing I would say is, I don't, I'm sure that the tickets are more than what the PTA is paying eighteen dollars per trip, and we've left it up to the, you know, up to the schools to decide how they're going to pay for the rest of the tickets. If we, and I don't know if that was, you know, there's been different ideas thrown around of how we're gonna pay for the other portions of the tickets, whether that comes from the activities fund, or if it's then gonna be cast on to parents, but if it is cast on the parents, then as PTA, we have to be careful, because then we do ask for parental support and other ways to help continue to raise funds. So, I, that's, you know, the only trip that as far as concerned, that would be something that would be a personal concern.
Mr. Peely. Do you have any idea how much that's gonna cost, and how we're gonna go about getting other? You know that answer?
I don't have the exact cost of the tickets, but the remaining portion will either gonna be asked for the kids to bring it, or picked up by student activity.
So, is seventh grade the only grade that their trip is being picked up by student activities?
Like we said, we prefer to ask the parent for the remaining portion.
Okay, so, so we are asking parents, and then if there was a few parents who were unable, then, because that's totally different than what I thought you said.
Yes, yes.
So, we are reaching out to the parents for this.
We've done it in the past, where we reach out to the parents.
Okay, but you don't know, you don't know an amount?
One day admission is eighteen dollars.
A one-day admission is eighteen dollars.
Correct.
Well, my, my issue, my issue would be a cost, like if we were down now, that's a personal issue. My.
I kind of agree with the thinking expressed, that are we taking some of the thunder away from the eighth grade trip to use, whatever happens, happens, I'm, it's their call, but does it take the thunder away, and is there something else that would be different, but not at the same extent and not at the same expense?
Did, did you know about this ahead of time, and did anyone call the school, the principal?
That is, that, I did not get a chance to talk to Mr. Peely prior, literally thirty seconds before the little, like, start of their presentation.
So, no, so no other, so no parents, so, so did you, so?
I, I, as the, as the president, I've gotten a bussing agenda, I guess, about a week ago, that, but the PTA is not paying for those buses.
Right.
But I did see that that one was on there, but I had not had a chance to talk to Mr. Peely prior.
I believe it again, I have looked at the information again, the trip was planned on the day that I was surrounded by, I believe it's a map, that everything in the park is related to a map curriculum.
Oh, you mean the park, the park puts something on where it's actually like a curriculum-based map option?
Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, it's not the trajectory of the roller coaster and how fast the miles per hour are when gravity inflicts it, or any of that? But that, no, I'm being, I'm not being facetious, I'm asking, like, there's a real formula to it.
That's physics, that's a physics trip.
Well, there has to be an education, no, I don't need an educational basis, we can find an educational basis, just on how to get on and off an exit. What I'm saying is, is there a real program, organized function, once there, instead of just people going off with their own?
Yeah, the trip is actually twenty-nine ninety-five, and it is, it's a page around a successful map that it wouldn't be in this, and we actually, if we didn't go on that day, it would've been cheaper, but then it would've just been going in the park.
Oh, okay.
So, it's thirty dollars that day, because it's an actual thing?
Thing.
Some of the skills are using formulas, data collection, graphing data, interpreting graphs, explaining, defending, reasoning, number operations, number relationship functions, algebra, algebraic thinking, geometry, probability and stats, advanced topics, or knowing the sub-attitudes of the world.
I don't think that's necessary at this time, unless anyone else has a question.
I, I, I don't know, I agree with her, going through the school system, eighth grade was her last year, you went away to the park, it was a rite of passage, if you will.
My, my issue, I, I, I get the whole rite of passage, because I was, I was at Great Adventure with you that day. However, I, my issue is, my issue is going out to the parents, just, I, I just know how difficult that can be, and it puts a burden, I mean, it may not be difficult for you and I, but it does put a, a burden on quite a few people, so.
I agree with you too, that, that shouldn't be.
Do we, but, 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 with that being said, do we know if any of the other trips are gonna be costing, because I'm not just gonna say, because of, I'm not comfortable with saying, oh, I, I don't approve of that, unless I.
Well, I agree to pay fifty for Captain Down in Great Adventure, so.
I'm not talking about that, that was my question. I wanted to know, from kindergarten on up, are we going out for any other parents?
Nothing from Bingham Downing this year.
Because I know we had a discussion on that third grade trip, which is quite a bit of money.
Right. We decided we were gonna take the difference from our student activities fund.
Student activities fund, so, so kindergarten to third grade, no, nobody is being charged anything on the trip.
Correct.
Do you know anything, and Mr. Peely, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I would've asked you this ahead of time. Do you know fourth to eighth, besides eighth grade, which we all know, and, but fourth to seventh grade, besides seventh grade, fourth, fifth, or sixth?
Sixth, third, maybe medieval times, it was about the eighteen-dollar curriculum.
So, fourth and fifth, no?
Fourth to the state.
No, I think that's free, isn't it?
It makes it free. Yeah, and, I mean, we do think, the reality is, you need grade one to do a trip to see Mockingjay, because every year, novel's great, great. It's something that's done in the past, not every year, because there hasn't been a packaging movie out every year, but we do, it's something that, I mean, if we didn't ask parents at some point, it would really, you know, let go of our student activities, so. But it's something that the board, I mean, doesn't think is, we should be done, we'll support it, and we'll figure something out.
Say it again.
I'm fine with them asking, I'm not fine with the, I think that, that we're okay with it being an amusement park and that sort of, I'm okay if it's curriculum-based, but I'm not meaning a true curriculum-based activity, not just us calling it curriculum-based. That's my thing. As long as it truly is something of function, I would be better off with it, but.
And then, my next question is.
Does it really deserve math, which is an early grade when they go?
No, that's a, that's a, that's a reward.
Right.
Is, is this something they're looking to do every single year moving forward, then? Is this Hershey Park trip?
I mean, and that's the thing, that has been, the trips have been inconsistent because of lack of student interest, and because some, some, you know, they can try to say, go out of interest inventory of the kids, they want it to be towards educational, they want it to be memorable, but they want the kids to have fun. I think yes is the answer, because, you know, curriculum related, it seems to be something the kids love, but there's no guarantees, because not every trip is out every year.
So, let me ask you, okay, so, how did it come about? Like, what was the?
The teachers are asked to come up with something for each grade level.
Like, last year, seventh grade went to a, I think it was in a watershed, like a science-based one, which was actually.
It was awful.
Right, but that's the response that got them good.
And that's how, that was our opinion on the second grade one. Right. And, and we've been very vocal with the teachers, and now, my, like, you know, now they're gonna go to the zoo, they'd much rather go to the zoo than for a fort system and a forty-five minute play, pit and pitman.
This is the same time, I don't, like, this is something that even the teachers took initiative.
Right, that's how I.
And they're, and they're, and they're looking to.
I think, yeah, I think they probably listened to the subject last year, and were like, okay.
But I don't, and, I'd like to hear, I don't wanna shoot down or make a teacher feel like, you know, we came up with a good idea, we went out of our way, we found something that we thought the kids would be good and be interested in, and we're saying no, just because, I get it, because I came through systems, like you said, just like Sam, just because they have a rite of passage, that's what I'm trying to answer questions. I always feel like we're penalizing them for, same time, for going above and beyond and trying to figure out something that would get the kids excited.
I, I, I completely agree with the idea of finding exciting and new and invigorating types of trips, I mean, there are, and I give it to the teachers for trying to find something exciting, you know, I, I think once we start it, I think we just have to be careful of the ramifications, and, I mean.
Well, I mean, I think that, I mean, the public might not know this, because obviously, we only have a few members of the public, but, you know, if, if they ask the protocol and how it was picked, I mean, we obviously have an established protocol, you know what I mean? It's not that, that's something's gonna happen every single year, you understand what I mean? Like, if they always change, and I don't think we really have backlash from anyone that changes, I just feel like, although I do agree with you too, I, I understand a hundred percent where you're coming from, I also have, I feel like I have to agree, like, we had teachers go out of their way and do what we asked, and come up with a plan, and, you know, we already got a quote for buses, and, I mean, I'm sure they probably mentioned it to their students, because I know, my students know I'm planning one in So, do you have any other comments or questions? We'll just have to take a vote when we're there.
I just wanted to.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any, any other comments, questions?
Eleanor Kelly, 161 Forest Avenue. Maybe the choice would be better if they went to a closer park, so they could have more time at the park, and maybe it would be a little cheaper if they went to Dorney Park in Allentown. That's just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's a curriculum-based day, though, it's a specific day.
They go on the program, I think.
Mr. Peely wants to say something.
Oh, the park itself puts the program on?
Puts a program, it's not the teachers. It's not the teacher. Mr. Peely, do you want to say something?
I just had to add, for the teacher dedication piece, the return time is four o'clock, so this is not, this is a muller contract with time, so they're doing this without getting paid extra, because they wanna do a quick gift, so.
So, they will have a, just, they'll have just as much time at Hershey Park that every other student would have anywhere else they go.
Well, I mean, maybe not every minute, but my point is, they took that into account because of the rides that they just.
So, they're not arriving home till four o'clock? On that Friday, by the way, that's a Friday. The Friday of our basket auction. All right, any other questions? All right. Secretary Report.
All right. For this month, I'll just close it up. Currently, SJP Rockland Roofing has come to pretty much have closed, as far as the roofing project is concerned, here at Vols. Right now, we're still in the process of doing windows and doors. Windows were getting started at Bingham, today. Actually, it's tonight, they were gonna deliver. Downing windows were getting delivered, doors at Downing and at Bingham, and at Vols are all completed, so now they're just finalizing windows at Bingham and windows at Downing. We're also looking at finalizing some of the other issues besides the roof that happened with the June twenty-fourth storm, so our gymnasium will be getting painted over the winter break, based on the insurance money that was received. Also, there will be asbestos abatement done, because in some of the flooring that has to be replaced, it was realized underneath was asbestos tile, which is fine as long as it's contained, but if we're looking at replacing carpeting, we then need to actually, if we're gonna pull it up, it needs to be an asbestos abatement, so that will be done in certain areas to address that, in the main office area, and also, a storage area for maintenance. Other areas will be reviewed and looked at during other times where the school will be closed, to make sure that there's no students, but then, of course, there's also environmental testing that has to take place with any asbestos abatement that happens. We, Mr. Ainucci and I just had our major review with the county office and the other sending districts with Black Horse Pine, and we just finalized our school choice numbers for the sixteen-seventeen school year. We will have eleven students listed as school choice. With food service, we did conduct a survey on pizza. It came out that the majority of students enjoyed salad-packed pizza, but to accommodate our student council representatives, who took the time to give a report, we will be throwing in certain days throughout the month where option one for, not Friday, but option one may be on a Tuesday or a Wednesday.
Would be another pizza.
Will be the other option of pizza choice.
Nice.
To accommodate all taste buds involved.
Nice.
Hand dryers were replaced, and we do have materials ordered to ensure that the bathrooms will be all, and stall doors will be put up correctly.
And, and?
Oh, and the, and the what?
And what?
Can I speak out?
Yes, good.
I don't want to steal Mr. Peely's stuff.
Oh, sorry.
I'll just do it now, just one of us. Sean, which one?
I think it's a bad.
I know that he doesn't wanna be publicly recognized and do it anyway, thanks to Buckhorn, from all the students, Stan Volts, he contributed to us being able to purchase a man's car, and this thing is not well-received, but we were able to roll it out at the tri, that party between Volts and Delmar, and I wanna make sure that he is thanked publicly, without his contribution, it wouldn't have been possible, and, Dr. Parrish, I'm sorry, I hate her.
It's coming.
It was a good night, we had a call-in for a child of a, it's a t-shirt, right?
Yeah.
A child, who were at the game the other night, where the kids were gold laces, and they did a collection of golden food, so it was perfect.
They raised, I, I'm sorry, I didn't email this, they, they, they raised three hundred and seventy-six dollars once the royal family.
That's a mascot.
And that wasn't including what we donated with the laces to go for a gold, a laces for pediatric cancer, so.
So, it was kind of a perfect night, want to thank Ms. Delfield, she was actually the one who dressed up with the, the horse that night.
Who dressed up? Who dressed up?
What's that?
Who dressed up?
Ms. Delfield.
Who dressed up?
The teacher, and we have a student that's gonna take over their responsibility starting Friday for our home games, so, thanks to our student council for bringing it up, thanks to Buckhorn, and thanks for the board report.
I did have to give the board a sneak peek of Sammy and Bucky the hawk, so.
I was having a sneak.
I got, yeah, to Mr. Buckhorn, Buck. Sorry, I, I forgot to tell you that.
I was just gonna say, did we vote on that?
No, we don't need to vote, that was Mr. Buckhorn bought today. Thank you again. Superintendent's report, I'm sorry, I don't think you can, if you're gonna follow that.
So, there's nothing going here. I'll just update student enrollment, still studying sixty-six, my point is, we are by twenty-eleven, I have teacher placements, you can see that on the report. Yeah, tonight, ASSA application submitted by Dr. Yeah, tonight, uh, S S A application submitted by Dr. McCarron Company, it's only December, I was gonna mention that. Basically, that's just another big gift to the state, it's for, uh, I think our state. July the Christmas, um, music performance conducted by, uh, Miss Madi, I just, it's not called, Amy, Amy, excuse me, she got married, I'm over here. The gym was, not the gym, the auditorium was packed again, Troy, uh, did a great job, that's come a long way in the last three, four years, the student participation is really good. We get a band, it's still my favorite part, but that's just having office down the hallway, hearing them practice in September. Really, I'm not sure of what they're playing, and you can watch them on stage in December, you can actually hear, it's like, it's jingle bells. They do a great job, so, just wanted to mention that. As Dr. McCarron said, we do do with the town office for our major review, along with Black Horse Pike, cause retention at Delmar, it's the first group done that. Since we've been around, I don't know what's happening here, um, just kinda seeing where we're at collectively as the sending district of Black Horse Pike. We are preparing for a CUSAC review, which I believe is March and May at night. Just wanna pass some more information to you about that. Oh, of course, I'll require also Miss Madi to group down to Atlantic City to do the, the past three years, make the. Not sure where that, where's that thing, not while I see it, is it, is it Monday this year? Is that one of these? And then do, I saw that's something the kids go towards every year, so I wanna thank the music association, and all the volunteers. As Dr. McCarron said, gym will be, um, painted, those are the holiday break, as well as scoreboard requests.
That was done this weekend, and we have to get into the actual model.
Also, look to upgrade that scoreboard for both sides of the gym, um, which is a little bit of an expense, because of.
That's okay.
In order to connect it. While we planted some seeds, and the Rotary's having maybe help us out, supposed to help out, right? They're always looking to help us out. Rowan, this guy, you're, you're rowing, you're. Well, I asked Rotary for assistance, particularly for student needs and family needs, but, you know, this is a good one, so.
That is my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Principals' reports, nurses' reports, building and grounds, and special education reports. Does anybody have any questions on any of the reports, I did not ask you that during the, uh, mid-over reports.
I did this report, but I pulled down a little bit of that whole thing, the, the back curriculum on my turn, if anybody wants to see it with the last.
Oh, okay, you mean for the park?
Yeah, okay. Did you wanna say anything?
Um, I haven't, I don't have.
Does anyone have any questions about the reports? No, then we're gonna move along, is there a PTA report?
Um, this is the PTA, we are, starting in January, we start planning for basketball, and we're starting to get some raises, um, and we ask for so much, we need more support. Thank you for what you have to say, that's twenty-nine to April, um, and we'll see, we'll talk about it later.
All right, thank you, the Camden County Ed, Services Commission has not met, school board, do you wanna, we wanna re, resume in January? Or do you have anything?
Uh, for the, the nutrients, the, the.
Yes, yes.
Uh, nothing will happen now for spring, uh, there was one, uh, resolution that we voted on last month that was approved, and that was to make the, uh, charter schools, uh, stick the same two percent minimum increase at public schools after them. And they want to increase, they're just trying to money that they're not gonna get from us.
Awesome, thank you.
And, um, I did that.
Yeah, Black Horse Pike, I don't think there's anything, negotiations, anything?
Uh, progress, we've been scheduling meetings until January, the holidays.
Awesome.
Oh, Plany and Zoni Board?
Come here.
Uh, Plany and Zoni Board, nothing took place, uh, the month of December, uh, it wasn't really, nothing on the agenda. They meet in January, they'll do reorganization, uh, but there will be a, uh, one, one, uh, item that will be discussed, and that is, uh, Albatto is put in, to be able to, uh, build, I believe it's three units.
Three separate, yeah, three separate houses.
And, uh, I think that's gonna go through all right, I don't think that's gonna create a problem, yes, over by the ball fields, behind those bars.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, other than that promise.
And our ad hoc committee will, um, will meet about the new construction, will meet again after the holidays as well. So then we are finally at the property and transportation new business, if there's no other questions. Everybody good? So I need a motion to approve the following on the recommendation of the superintendent, facility use, field trips, one to four, excuse me.
I'll just make a motion to approve property and transportation items, item one through four.
Motion made by Naomi. Seconded by Patty. Roll call.
Ms. Derek?
Yes.
Ms. Beevy? Ms. Buckon?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Shrimpad Lazo? Ms. Panzarella? Ms. Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items number one through six. Motion made by Chaz. Seconded by Naomi, she was first, sorry. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derek?
Yes.
Ms. Beevy?
Yes.
Ms. Buckon?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
I know, right? I already had a board member call me crying, just say yes. It's good for our family, sorry, it's very.
Yes.
Ms. Shrimpad Lazo? Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Baldwin?
I'm gonna miss you.
I, I guess you don't have to, um, I don't have to say it publicly, but I will, um, I already did have one board member call me crying, she's not here. Um, uh, but we wish you nothing but the best, and, yeah, yeah.
I was just gonna say, I also wanted to publicly thank Christopher all the help, that she's been to me personally and professionally, she's been awesome, I, don't make me cry. I'm super excited for her, though, I mean, it is, I would say, a loss, you know, for our schools, but I'm so proud of her, putting herself out there and starting her next chapter, but she's just been great, she's great to work with somebody who really genuinely cares about her community and her students, so, I wish her the best of luck.
Thank you. Bye. I need a motion to approve items number one through nine. Motion made by Chaz.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Roll call.
Ms. Derek?
Yes.
Ms. Beevy?
Yes.
Ms. Buckon?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Shrimpad Lazo? Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Yes. Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve items number one through eight. Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Naomi.
Ms. Buckon? Yes, yes. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Shrimpad Lazo? Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
And Ms. Baldwin?
Yes. Under policies and public relations, I need a motion to approve policy number, uh, two, four, three, one, for the first reading.
I make a motion, uh, I'm not here.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Naomi, roll call.
Ms. Derek?
Yes.
Ms. Beevy?
Yes.
Ms. Buckon?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Shrimpad Lazo? Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
No.
At this time, we are open for public, any public comment at this time, does anyone have any other public comments they'd like to say? Mrs. Kelly, thank you.
Oliver Kelly, one sixty-one Forest, I understand that you have the results from the FARC test, and I just wanted to know if they were going to be, uh, given out today, or is, if there's any discussion on them?
Well, we did have a discussion on it during our work session.
Right.
But if you'd like the PowerPoint, we could have an email to you directly. Or would you like us to print you out a copy?
If you could print something, that would be great.
Dr. McCarron will do it right now for you.
Okay.
Thank you. And if you have any questions, because you may, because we have questions as well.
Sure.
You can always call Mr. Iain or Dr. McCarron.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. And, yeah, it'll also be on Dan's.
Dan taped it.
Blog, taped it as well, so they hear some of our questions on Dan's blog as well.
Oh, okay.
He taped it, so you could see it and go along with it.
Okay, good.
At this time, I need a motion, we will be going into executive session this evening.
Okay.
Motion made by Chaz. Seconded by Patty. Whereas Wild Center buyer and buyer open public meetings act requires all meetings of the Runway School District Board of Education to be held in public, N J S A ten colon four dash twelve B says there are nine types of matters that may lawfully be discussed in executive session without the public being permitted. Whereas the Runway Public School District Board of Education has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas the nine exemptions to public meetings set forth in N J S A ten colon four dash twelve B are listed below. And next to each exemption is a box within the number of issues we privately discuss, that fall within the exception shall be written, and after each exception is a space where additional information that will disclose as much information and ethical decision as possible, without undermining the purpose of the exemption shall be written. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Runway Public School District Board of Education will go into closed session for the following reasons as outlined in N J S A ten colon four dash twelve B. Any pending or anticipated litigation or contract, co, excuse me, contract negotiation in which the public body is or may become a party. Any matters fall within the attorney's private privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his expertise as a lawyer. More specifically, we're gonna be talking about New Jersey's insurance group and student matters, thank you, sorry. Whereas the length of the executive session is not determined, however, the Runway Public School District Board of Education will make every attempt to estimate the time of the session prior to convening the session. Afterwards, the public meeting shall reconvene at about eight fifteen, if not sooner, and the Runway Public School District Board of Education will proceed with business. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Runway Public School District Board of Education will go into executive session for only the above stated reasons. Be it further resolved that the Runway Public School District Board of Education hereby declares that a discussion of the aforementioned subjects may be made public at a time when the Runway Public School District Board of Education attorney advises that the disclosure of the discussion will not detrimentally affect any right, interest, or duty of the school district, or any other entity with respect to said discussion. Be it further resolved that the Runway Public School District Board of Education, for the aforementioned reasons, hereby declares that the public is excluded from the portion of the meeting during which the above discussions shall take place. And hereby directs the board secretary to take the appropriate action to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the board secretary on the next business day following this meeting shall furnish a copy of this resolution to any members of public who request one of the fees allowed by N J S A forty-seven colon one A. Action on any item may or may not be taken in the open session at the conclusion of the executive session. All in favor of governing to the executive session at this time?
Aye.
Ayes, aye.